I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. But I would ask for a moment of silence. In memory of Teresa Ciati Giamatoio. She was a special ed educator in our schools. I'm not exactly sure what job she... I think she was a teacher, but I'm not sure if she was also a coordinator. But she was with us for 30 years. She started in 1965 and retired in 1995. So she died two weeks ago. So I'd ask for a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. And now we have some additions to our agenda.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move item 10C1 to item 6D.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's...okay. Mr. Darnell C.
I'd like to make a motion to add suspension of policy 5133 about line in policy 9314, suspension of policies, bylaws and regulations to the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And that's going to become item?
10J.
10J. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Also, I'd like to add to the agenda under 10K, student batter expulsion number 2425-4.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Those three motions are approved. Okay. We good? Okay. Looking for an approval of the minutes of May 22nd?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Communication from Board of Education members. Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I wish I had been able to make this announcement earlier because we would have more people, but I am thrilled to announce that we will have a ceremony on October 22nd in the fall at the high school to induct two new people to our Wall of Honor. They are Bill Pesch, former student of mine, who is the...I have the actual title. Do you know Bill?
I know Bill.
Wonderful person, let me just tell you. He is the chief of medical...chief medical officer for the Hospital of Special Care. He's also done community service work, won some awards for his medical practice, and just a wonderful person. I don't know if I can tell a personal part of it. I know it's okay to tell a little personal thing. My wife was in the hospital for a very long time after a stroke. I was in New York. And the person who finally called me to tell me what was going on and help me because unfortunately the people in the hospital were kind of...didn't know, was Bill. I hadn't talked to him in many years. He called me when I was sitting with a social worker, bawled my eyes out because I couldn't get her moved. And he was the one who went through the medical records. He went through everything legally and all the medical stuff, which he didn't have to do. I cannot tell you how much, not only is he a wonderful doctor, but is a wonderful human being, so it's a great honor to induct him. And the second person we all know is Chris Palmeri, the principal of the Apollo Middle School. Chris has been involved with a lot of community service. I'm not going to list the whole thing now, the drama stuff, the apple harvest. He serves on our town council, and he's a principal of the school. And he's one of the icons of our community. So those are the two people being inducted. Took us a while. We had some complications this year, but the ceremony will be in October, and the public is invited. It's free. Bring as many people as you want, and we will obviously talk about it again in the fall, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Darnell C.
Briefly, for those of us that really struggled on graduation day, dealing with heat and crowds, and it was still a wonderful time, and very, very impressed with the way it was organized. And I think we had a whole routine that was...
Yes, we did.
Looking to organize it. Few changes, but then hopefully it worked out some of the bugs that they had. Overall, I thought it was a great day. A big crowd of people, which really impressed me. I think a lot of it happened too with those new bleachers we have on the other side of the field. But it was a great time, and I think everybody enjoyed it.
To graduate that many students in less than two hours is remarkable. Yes. We are hearing applause from the back of the rooms.
Senior parent.
Yes, a senior parent. So yeah, I...they did...I thought they did an amazing job. Okay, anyone else? No? We all good? All right, moving right along. Communications from the administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Four items this evening. One is just a thank you to the Main Street Community Foundation. We actually had received a $500 donation from the Warner Family Fund to be applied towards the tuition for two credit recovery courses for one of our students. And that's something that the mother wanted the child to go for the credit recovery, but was enduring a financial hardship, and so we're glad they came and supported that cause. We will be very busy this summer and early into the fall, as you know, working towards the roof referendum. I'll be sending, just for informational purposes, a calendar of Board of Finance meetings, planning zoning meetings, and council meetings for everything related to the bond ordinance and the public hearings leading up to the referendum. But there are several this summer. July 14th and 15th will be council and planning and zoning. That's when they'll set the public hearing dates. And then, let's see, the Board of Finance will be July 23rd, and the public hearing would be July 30th. Town Council's public hearing would be August 6th. Well, notice of the hearing, and then the 11th, the public hearing itself. So I'll be busy this summer at public hearings and council meetings to make sure that we keep on time with that. And so that's...as you all know, those are three important projects for us with our three elementary schools.
Can you send those dates out to?
I'm going to send the whole calendar to the board.
Perfect. Thank you.
Legislative session. It was an outstanding legislative session in many ways for us this year. There was not a lot of legislative unfounded mandates in it or new things, which is, you know, pleasant. But three highlight items, I think. There was a hold harmless provision in the education cost share grant, which means there's an additional $256,000, 195, that the town is receiving that it did not anticipate receiving. The town manager obviously has to create a budget based on what the formula projected, based off of the governor's budget. And so I'll be working with the Board of Finance and Town Council to seek appropriation for those funds because it is education cost share dollars, so legally it actually has to come to the Board of Education. I've had good conversations with elected officials on both the Board of Finance and council leadership, and they both agree and support that. There's also a new grant called the SEED Grant. It stands for the Special Education Expansion and Development Grant, did not...has never existed before, and the district's going to be receiving $231,664. It's extremely important that this...these grant funds go towards expanding or developing a program that does not exist. So it cannot be used to supplant. It must be used to supplement, so I will make that very clear to everyone in terms of people may be thinking we have some sort of windfall, but we don't. I think the...even more importantly, if it's not used to supplement and is used to supplant, they will fine you twice the amount of what you receive out of your education cost share dollars the following year. So they're adamant that it's meant as an additional resource because they're hearing districts say, "We need social workers, we need psychologists, you know, we need paraeducators, and we don't have...we can't just keep operating within our...adding within our operating budget." That's them hearing this. And so this is not in any way related to the governor's proposal for the $40 million in expansion that I shared with you from the February press conference I attended. That is part of the fiscal year 2027, and that's a separate grant in itself, and that's actually for capital to develop, like, let's say, preschool classrooms or special education programs that don't exist. And then the last one is called the Drip Grant, and it stands for the District Repair and Improvement Project. And Lisa Hammersley and the State School Finance Project were kind of spearheaded this grant and did a nice job getting support on both sides of the aisle for this. It passed with strong support. We haven't got the runs on it yet in terms of what are...what we can expect, but it's really to help districts that have these large costs that are hard to put in an operating budget that may not have cash to fund it, a boiler replacement, a classroom renovation, you know, that kind of thing, that, you know, they're just hard to come by. We've been a little bit lucky with some of the one-time funding that the Board of Finance and Town Council have provided us for those types of, you know, occurrences, but this will even relieve us of having to go to them for that hopefully down in the future. And it also will help me to keep that out of the operating budget, which is what I've been trying to do the past couple of years to keep the number down. And then lastly, I just want to give a shout out to our town manager, Alex Rickardone, and Peter Romano. They have been at this for several years, and what I'm going to tell you is trying to get the United States EPA to modify the requirement that we have to test Apollo and Kennedy every year for PCBs. As we know, there's an associated cost with that. We've been doing it for several years now. There's never been more than a trace identified within any of the samples. So what they're now allowing us to do is to do it every two years. So we have to do it...we don't have to do it this year. We will have to do it next year. And depending on the results of the next year's test, we then don't have to do it till every three years, every year thereafter, you know, thereafter. So it's a nice, kind of, I think, a common sense modification that they made for us. You'll remember how much we spent trying to cut the block around the windows and the doorways and removing the vapor barrier and the gym and all that, which really had us modify...I think we had to do a second referendum for it for all the abatement.
Nine million dollars.
That was right before my time at the middle school, but it really cost the district a ton of money to remediate all that and abate all that. So it makes sense that, you know, they're giving us...they're still requiring us to do some, but they're giving us a little bit of flexibility, which in turn, again, that won't be in my operating budget next year.
The PCB issue at the high school that happened...
With the lights?
...a long year ago, when the transformer blew. There was a plan back then that was...started to kind of remove as many of those transformers that contained PCBs. Is that still in the plan, or?
Yeah, I'd have to get back to you on that.
That stuff was removed or?
I'm thinking that was before my time. If it was 20 years ago...
Well, 20 years ago is when we had a minor fire.
Yep.
And what happened is that the transformer blew and it put the PCBs into the air.
Okay.
And we shut the high school down for...
It was the first day of school, wasn't it?
That was before that.
It happened right before.
I knew it was around...
We had to open the doors.
Yep, yep, okay. That was during Harvey, so Terry was still teaching up there.
I was there.
And you were teaching too, yeah.
I'll send you that...I'll get you that information in terms of if it's still...if there are still any existing or if they've all been removed. I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, because I know the middle schools, I think, renovated them.
They were all removed then.
Yeah, they removed it.
But that's why it's so annoying that we still have to test at the middle school because we know we've removed it because...
That's my point.
Yeah, exactly.
Why are we doing it if...
And that's what the town manager and Peter were going after, that it was...it seemed like an overkill, like an unnecessary expense each year. So the compromise was that, you know, ultimately it will be every three years. And initially, I think the agreement was to that it only had to occur for a period of 20 years, the testing. I could be wrong, but...so that may be related even to the same...
Could be.
We're over 20 years with that.
So that concludes my report for the year.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Communications from the public on agenda items only. I'm just looking at Roger. Okay.
We don't have a public here?
We have Roger. Here's Roger. Hi, Roger. Okay. Next is the approval of the out-of-state overnight field trips. And item one is the high school 4H to Louisville, Kentucky.
Do you want to go up and say a word about the trip?
Sure.
I actually have a little bit of background. This is a little unusual. I think I have enough copies by college as well.
We can share.
This communication is from Emily Alter. She's our state urban coordinator. She is our Middlesex County Extension Educator. She is our 4H state urban coordinator, and she works directly with the...
I'll share.
And I think she has a copy.
Oh, okay.
And just to give you all a little bit of background, as well, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Margie Gro. I am the newest agro-science teacher at Suddington Agro-science. I joined the program in December. I'm very happy to be here and part of Suddington. I've been in agriculture most of my life. I was really excited to start a 4H club here at Suddington, and the support from the department, from administration has been amazing. So we actually started in January. We've had monthly club meetings. We've had a great response from our youth. I've been involved in 4H since I was five. I've been a volunteer in the state of Connecticut for 30-plus years. We had a member who submitted photography for our State Arts Alive Day, which is like expressive arts day, who won best in show color photograph for the first time out, which is amazing. We had a student who competed on our hippology contest, which is what this field trip is about, who has actually earned the trip to go to Kentucky to compete on our national level trip, which is a huge honor and amazing for someone the first time they've competed. We also have two students representing Suddington High School, Suddington 4H, our agro-science program, as delegates for the 4H tours program at the Biggie this year in September. This is an academic contest in Louisville, Kentucky. Most of what we do is academic. We do have some showing, but I've always focused on the academic side. I've been a volunteer and a leader for 30 years, as I said, heavily involved in the horse program. So this is all academics. The hippology contest is one of four major contests that we do take kids to Louisville, Kentucky for. We have hippology, which is the study of the horse, so it's all things. General knowledge tests, slide shows, and this letter kind of explains a little bit more. Horse judging. We have a horse judging contest that I've traveled to and am actually the state coach for on the state level for 4H as well. We have...and that's where you judge different classes of horses. We have our quiz bowl, which is like Jeopardy!, but all horse knowledge, again, huge depth. And then we also have our communications contest, which is public speaking. We give an actual speech, prepared speech, individual demo, and team demo. So for students and youth and 4H members to actually qualify to go is really a high honor. We have changed how we do things on our state level. We rotate some of our contests every other year. We take the four high individuals from the state. So this student actually was the top. I think she placed third overall in the state to go to Kentucky.
Excellent.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions. You all might have, but I wanted to give you a little bit of background ahead of time as well.
Yeah, thank you for that.
No, of course, my pleasure.
I like the horse bowl personally.
I actually got to compete...I'm from Maryland. I grew up in 4H in Maryland. I actually got to compete for Maryland at this national contest for a horse bowl and for horse judging. It's an amazing opportunity. We typically fly down on Thursday. We do tours Thursday night and Friday. Actually, was just down for a week-long PD this past week in Lexington, and I made some really great contacts and some tours possibilities already. The contest itself is Saturday. We do awards on Sunday. We fly home on Sunday. There is no financial responsibility to the district. This is funded through UConn. UConn pays about a third of it. And then our 4H members, our volunteers, our coaches, we help fundraise the remaining portion, or this individuals are individually responsible. So there's no financial responsibility to the district at all. I just want to make that clear as well for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to move to approve the field trip as requested.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sounds good.
Other than it sounds great. All in favor?
Thank you all so much.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you all so much. Thank you for moving it up on the agenda. I appreciate it. I sat on my board event at home, so for a number of years, so I understand. Thank you all for volunteering your time. Thank you for all you do for the board, for the education, for everyone here at Suddington Schools. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the high school girls varsity volleyball team trip to Saratoga, New York.
Yeah. Move that the 4H through the field trip request as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Okay, next items on the agenda. Committee reports, curriculum and instruction committee meeting.
Yep. On Friday, May 30th, we had a meeting, and we discussed the following, supported the following. And by the way, we were all impressed with how the teachers made the courses relevant to the real world. It's just amazing. Some of the things were...any...so the first course was SHS Technology Education Revised Course Structure for Transportation. The revision restructures the transportation pathways into multi-course sequence, transportation technologies, automotive technologies 1, automotive technologies 2. Second one is the social studies course, the Revised International Relations Curriculum. Can you imagine that one right now? The course examines grand strategy and challenges students...challenges students to analyze how nations develop, implement, and evaluate strategic options internationally. Third one was from the math department. It was a revised algebraic concepts curriculum. This course is intended for students who have completed Algebra I and Geometry, but require further skill development before progressing to more advanced algebra courses. Kind of fills in a gap there. The next one was the SHS Agricultural Science Department, bringing forward four revised units for the equipment and power systems courses. Isn't it amazing all the different things we offer in the school system? It's wonderful. The course provides students with knowledge, skills, and applications around the following topics: personal safety, machine and shop safety, tractor and loader safety, and tractor attachment and mower safety. The next was a middle school language arts curriculum pilot, beginning in the fall of 2025. The middle school language arts department will fully pilot Common Lit 360, an open-source curriculum aligned with state standards. The program supports the science of reading through an integrated approach that combines reading, writing, vocabulary, listening, and speaking. And finally, a dual enrollment course offering was presented in the business...from the business department. This says dual enrollment marketing, currently marketing one and two courses with Central Connecticut. Their Fundamentals of Marketing course. This partnership would allow Suddington students to earn three college credits and one full SHS credit upon successful completion. A second opportunity involves articulating the SHS course, management, and entrepreneurship with CCSU's Main Street Business Ownership and Management course. Students who complete the high school course would receive half of SHS credit and three college credits. And lastly, the planned dual enrollment business communications with CCSU's managerial communication, which would grant students three college credits and halfway SHS credit. And that is the end of the report.
Mrs. Carman?
I want to add on the technology, the very first course. The kids in this program will learn how to operate different machinery and so forth. And these will be the kids that will get some jobs when they leave high school. So it's just absolutely wonderful what they're doing up there in that department.
Yes.
We were pretty impressed with that, right?
Very impressed.
Yes, we were. Any questions for anyone? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Yep.
Next is the finance committee. Mrs. Melo...or...yeah? Okay.
We met on Monday this past week, on the 23rd. Mr. Fickel provided an update on the bid 2026-02 for rubbish removal and recycling services. We had four bidders, and the administration's recommendation is to award the bid to CWPM for a period of three years. And we had a discussion because the pricing was much higher than it has been in the past. And we realized that a reallocation of funds is going to be necessary in order to meet the cost of the contract, so we're going to bring the fin...we'll bring an update back to the finance committee in the fall to complete that. But due to the essential nature of these services, the committee agreed to bring a motion to the full board for award.
I'd like to move to award bid 2026-02 rubbish removal and recycling removal to CWPM LLC of Plankville, Connecticut for three years.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the other item that the committee discussed was the administration gave an update on the renovation work at the new cellar location. An award was made to Acorn Builders in the amount of $99,500 through the superintendent's approval. And the reason that we did that was due to the timing of the work that needs to be done to get the students into the location in the fall, and given that the early June board meeting was canceled due to graduations. So we provided that update to the committee. And then the other item that we discussed was that the new cellar lease was going to be signed this week, and it was signed this week after we met. And it does have the five-year term with an agreement for a five-year renewal at our option. So we just brought that back to the committee. And that concludes the report.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Melo. Okay, next item on the agenda is the personnel report.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the personnel report as submitted by the Human Resources Department.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Full business. Town government communications, do you have anything to say? Aye. As we say, that, nothing. Okay, new business. Approval of non-lapsing account.
Move to approve a non-lapsing account to allow unexpended funds from the Board of Ed 2024-2025 operating budget to be deposited into a non-lapsing account up to the amount authorized by statute to be maintained for use authorized by the Board of Ed.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Approval of disposal of obsolete textbooks.
Move to approve the disposal of outdated textbooks that are no longer useful to the educational program.
Well, we have to have a second person then. Second...Mr. Brown, second. Now, you have a question, Mrs. Carman?
Just a comment.
Yeah?
Do we still give those books to other schools like we used to do? We're still doing that. I mean, I don't know if they're obsolete or not. We used to always take those textbooks and give them to somebody.
If we...if we could find a purpose for them, we always try, but we also try to sell them back to vendors that will try to resell them, and we will receive the funds if they're resold in another district.
Do we do all right with that, or what?
You know, you get pennies on the dollar for them. They're obsolete books. A lot of times, districts aren't buying lots of sets of them. They may need a few to complete, like a, you know, an enrollment bump in their district or not, so...but we try to repurpose them and give them a useful life after, if possible.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, it's not like a college bookstore.
No.
We can sell them back.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, dear.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Next item on the agenda, we have already taken care of those. We have the first reads for East Royal Suddington High School, International Relations, Algebra Concepts, Equipment and Power Systems, Unit 1, Unit 2, Unit 3, and Unit 4. So if you have any questions, you can bring them to Mr. Williams because he will study up on these, and then call Mrs. Sapon. Okay.
Everyone of them.
10J.
10J, yes. 10J.
Move to suspend policy 5133 in relation to the agreement as presented by the administration for student batter 2425, 2024-2025, 3, for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Okay.[1691.41] All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay. So we have five aye and one no.
Oh, was that for the...
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, got it? All right.
10K. Move to, uh, let me see. Hang on one second here. Move to expel student 2024, 2025 for the pending school year.
Second.
Any discuss, oh, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No? Okay. Motion passes. All right. Those are the only two, J and K. Okay.
Do you need another motion to go back into the second...
No, I just, no, first we have to go into Public Communications. Roger? He's good? Okay. We're going to resume executive session, excluding the press.
Make the move.
No, we don't need, no, we don't need another motion. No, we don't need, no, we can just go back in.
No press.
Excluding everybody. Well, we already did the exclusion. Giamato? Gia Matteo? She retired? Giamadio, yeah. Teresa?
I knew Giamadio's, I don't know Teresa.
I, well, I had found the obituary in the Hartford Current, and I sent it to Lisa, and she just sent me the same thing that I sent hers.
Did you know how old she was?
91.
You going home?
So, but she retired in, no, she retired in 90, but it said she worked for us for 30 years. I said, we can't, I, you know, I can't ignore.
There's a, that's a big family in town, probably.
I don't know, I didn't recognize the name.
Giamadio.
Giamadio, okay.
Giamadio, yeah. It was an art teacher. It was an art teacher, Kennedy Giamadio.
Go someplace?
Owen said she taught, I don't know.
She was, I don't know where she taught either. What do I do?
Yeah.
Where am I? Oh, that would be the chairperson of the board. Oh, that would be me. Yeah, thanks.
How are you?
And the PCBs were 2,000.
Okay.
Because I graduated in 2000, it was the 20...
I knew it was more than 20 years ago.
2001 school year, so that was like...
I remember it well. We weren't in school, and we had a little...
I was not anymore, but a couple moments.
No, I, I remember it because Harvey was the, did I say?
Harvey was super, and then the clocks, it was a clock. And the clocks were never fixed because it would have cost too much.